We'll call this meeting to order of the Ripon City Council. If we can have everyone stand for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation. Mr. Eucher.
Please call me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brandon.
If you bow your heads with me. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings you have so graciously given us. Resources, opportunities, relative peace. We thank you for all those things and we ask that you would help us to do your business, to do the city's business and to do so in a way that's according to your peace and to your will. Thank you for all these things and may you bless this time and this meeting. In your name we pray. Amen.
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 Watch out Pastor Brandon.
Darn right.
Mrs. Collins.
Roll call.
Councilmember Mike Listushak.
Present.
Dean Eucher.
Here.
Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jake Parks.
Here.
Mayor Leo Zuber.
Present. This portion of the meeting is set aside for public discussion. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on an item not on the agenda? If you could approach the podium, give us your name and address. And we set aside five minutes per presentation.
My name is Mary Lynn, M-A-R-Y-L-Y-N-N, Wheeler, W-H, two E's, L-E-R, hyphen Reynolds, R-E-Y, N-O-L-D-S. Today is March 12th, 2019, Tuesday. I'm in front of the Ripon, California City Council. The three topics that I want to address at this moment are as follows. Ripon cops performing fraudulent arrests. That's item one. Item two, sixty day eviction notice that was served upon my estranged husband, Philip Reynolds. Item three, my case has twice been dismissed by the courts indicating that no trespassing had indeed occurred even though I had been repeatedly arrested for trespassing. As I've indicated previously, I'm the outright landowner of Lot 15, which I purchased from Mark Wilber of McRory Wilber Communities Incorporated for $5,000. Outright landowner. My estranged husband did not pay for it. His name was not on the check. He has no land rights. So each and every time Ripon police officers arrest me for trespassing, there's a bald-faced blatant lie, falsehood and false statement. I also own the physical structure, 1221 Sapphire Court, Ripon, California, 95366. I built the structure with my own independent funds. I mentioned it the last time before you. By refinancing another separate property that I purchased before marriage, so my estranged husband has no property rights to that property as well. The property was 3419 Prince Albert Court, San Jose, California, 95312. Both of those transactions indicated a separate property transaction. 1221 Sapphire Court was not built with a McRory Wilber's construction loan and indicated that the last time was before you. Last week, I reached out to McRory Wilber to request that he retitle my property correctly. It should have been titled as Separate Property, not Community Property. My estranged husband, Philip Sheldon Reynolds', name should not have been on title. Once again, he did not provide any financial means at all involved in that property. My estranged husband, Philip Reynolds, Angelani Reynolds, were served a sixty day eviction notice on or near November 27th, 2018. Philip Reynolds and all trespassers were supposed to be out of my privately owned, privately built, privately financed with my own funds residential building, 1221 Sapphire Court, Ripon, California, 95366 by February 2019. If he is still living there, he's living there because Ripon, California, police fraudently conveyed my property to him. Each and every time Ripon police have arrested me and has kept my estranged husband in that property, that constitutes fraud. Since I own the land Lot 15, which I purchased for $5,000, each and every California police officer who was involved in arresting me directly or indirectly has to form a bogus illegitimate arrest. An illegitimate arrest is a fraudulent arrest. In the law of liberty case, the appellate court referenced the following definition for fraud, quote, "Fraud is a generic term which embraces all multifarious means which human ingenuity can devise and are resorted to by one individual to get an advantage over another. No definite and variable rule can be laid down as a general proposition defining fraud, as it includes all surprise, trick, cunning, disassembling, and unfair ways by which another's deceived." Armstrong versus Wasen. Each and every restraining order request and obtained by Ripon, California, police officers in behalf of Philip Reynolds, who is a known real estate thief, that I had previously reported to the Santa Clara County District Attorney's Office and the Internal Revenue Service constitutes aiding and abetting criminal activity by Ripon, California, police officers. Because I own the land Lot 15 and the residential building, each trespassing or property damage arrest and charges are bogus. My case has been twice dismissed by the courts, each and every time. And each and every arrest is a bogus fraudulent arrest, which constitutes false arrest, false imprisonment, assault, perjury, and filing a false document.
Thank you Ms. Reynolds. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council?
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Kelly Donahue. I am, my address is 1621 Carlsen Avenue, Modesto, California. I am the President/CEO of the Ripon Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to make a statement on behalf of the Ripon Chamber Foundation. For the past three years, the Ripon Chamber Foundation has put on the annual Ripon 4th of July fireworks festival at Missland Park. And regrettably, this year, the foundation no longer has the resources to put on this community event. We are offering the opportunity to take over this event to another organization or community institution. The Chamber Foundation is willing to facilitate another event taking, or another organization taking this event over. So we're putting it out to the community to see if anyone is interested or available. That's all we have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting of February 12th.
So moved.
Second.
They're waiting for you.
It didn't work.
They're not that fancy.
It didn't.
We haven't voted yet. Is it good? Okay.
Yep, there we go.
All right, next item is approval of the agenda as posted or amended. This would be the time, if there's anyone who wishes to pull items from the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull 1.3D.
Anybody else? I'd like to pull 1.1B and 1.3F. Mike, which one was yours?
1.3D.
Okay, got it. All right, then I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All right, next item is the consent calendar. Consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
So moved.
All right, now we'll consider the three items that were pulled. 1.1B, is this a payment we only get once a year? Because I don't remember seeing it before.
It is.
Why are we getting this one?
I believe this is a reconciliation from the previous year's funding that we received, vehicle licensing fees.
Okay.
Sorry, when we talked about it earlier, I thought you were talking about the SB1 money.
No.
Sorry about that.
So they shore up, is that what you're saying?
So this is to catch us up with what, okay, I got you. All right. I'm gonna wait and we'll take all three of them at the same time. Mike, 1.3D.
Yeah, 1.3D, the question I have, is that up here now? I understand what, James, I understand what that's all about, you know, on contract, but is there a process that you have in place, which I suspect there is, that if you need to call them in for something, in other words, if you don't use them, you don't spend it. But if you call them in on something, is there some sort of formal process you go through? I'm sure you've got it all covered, but I just, I'm asking the question, is it, here's what we have, need you to do, who's doing it, is it gonna be two hours, three hours, five hours? You kind of have some sense that what it's gonna take?
Sure, yeah, we, so the majority of the work that we would have MCR performing would be the inspections. We'd have them, they have their inspection rates on here, I believe it's a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five dollars, depending on that. So that rate has kind of been agreed upon and that would be mostly as needed. Where we would meet with them and agree on a price would be for the design services. It would typically be, you're gonna perform this task, what is that gonna take? We would agree on that, the rates are already set, but we would ensure that they wouldn't go over that kind of agreed upon price.
And that's because you're short.
Correct.
Staff, correct? Okay, all right, thanks.
So by inspections, that's house, inspections of house construction or any kind of inspection?
No, so this is all capital improvement project inspections, or it would be basically any improvements that would be in the right of way. So on our streets, so it could be private development in our right of way, but it would be those inspections.
Okay. I got you.
Correct.
All right. And 1.3F, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that the Garden Club is gonna
Yep.
clean up what has been a, in my mind, a pretty noticeable ISO over at St.opa Park. And it's right at the front, so every person that drives in sees that old playground. And the plans that they have are very nice. It's gonna, I talked to them and it's gonna take, they think a couple of years to get it all done, because they sort of have to raise the money, spend the money, raise the money. But when it's done, I think, well, I know, it'd be head and shoulders, can't get any worse than what's there now. All right, can I have a motion to approve 1.1B, 1.3D, and 1.3F?
So moved. Second.
Jeez.
I decided over there.
Quick. Good. Oh, I got. All right, moving on. Item two, ordinances, 2A, is an ordinance to add Chapter 16.91 dealing with personal wireless service facilities. Who's gonna handle this one? Oh, boy.
Well, good evening, council members. Before you is an urgency ordinance to adopt in addition to the code for personal wireless service facilities and to find it exempt from environmental review under CEQA. So basically, the purpose of an urgency ordinance is a finding of a public necessity. It will take effect immediately. So this is a one reading item that's coming before you. We're doing this because of FCC order that requires all agencies to have compliant regulations in place by March 25th of 2019. So that's 180 days after they adopted this order. So there was an extensive presentation at the last meeting that you've gone through kind of the requirements here, and staff has brought that back. So to just kind of go over some of the urgency findings, we found public need here. The FCC order is pushing, you know, all communities to get up to 5G speed. They think that there's gonna be a lot of applications coming through and not having a regulation in place actually would expose us to more of these coming in without the city having really any oversight. So getting something in place is really important by this deadline. There's several of the recitals lay out more findings. We could grow to as many as 120 of these in the city. So there are a lot potentially coming. The FCC order creates the shot clock, so we only have either 60 or 90 days in order to review applications, so it's really important to get this process in place so that we can do a thorough review of any applications that come before the city. Obviously, far-reaching concerns if these are in the public right of way. I'm sure we've spent a lot of time going over that, traffic and pedestrian safety aesthetics, that sort of thing. And all of those, you know, really secure the fact that there is a potential threat to public health and safety if the city doesn't have the ability to review those applications thoroughly. So the city right of way is a public resource that's extremely valuable. We need to ensure that public safety is at the forefront, and we're maintaining the aesthetic values of the community as well as the look and the feel of Ripon as having that kind of same sort of aesthetic appeal. So those are kind of the findings that, should the council go ahead and adopt this ordinance, would justify finding of urgency and making sure that these regulations are in place by the March 25th deadline. Now, overall, the ordinance lays out the process that applications would be submitted, staff would review, and meet those 60 and 90 day deadlines. There are fees set. The city's hands are really tied by FCC on this, so there's not a lot of movement here and the ordinance will meet all of those requirements with FCC order. That's kind of overall. Staff is here with the presentation from last time, so if there's specific questions that you want to go through on that, it is available, but it's kind of wrapping up all of the things. There are two changes that we'd like to note from the draft that went out for your review. 169103D, it's the definition, the last sentence just needs to be removed because it refers to the FCC definition, so just remove that section. And then 1691070A, there is a typo in the distance, so that's actually 500 feet from all public or private schools, not 250 as it states in the document. Everything else should be remaining the same, and we're happy to answer questions if needed.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
So I could wordsmith this thing to death like everybody can, and I don't really care about all that, but I just want to go unnoticed. It just bothers the living hell out of me that we're forced to do something in our town that we may or may not believe in. We're forced to charge a certain amount that may not cover our costs. So I just want to put that on record. I'm not happy with any of this.
Anybody else? I have a couple. And mainly it's for clarification, or make sure I understand it. 16.91.060, this talks about conditions, if they're not met, that the application can be rejected. If the application is rejected and then it's resubmitted, does the shot clock start all over again?
Yes.
We're not stuck with the original?
Correct. So at the end of the 90 days, if the application was not complete, we deemed it not completed and accepted at that point, it's basically withdrawn and then they can go back and re-prepare and then submit a new application and the clock would start at that point.
Okay. My next question has to do with one of those conditions. It talks about fees that can be assessed. And it says if the fee isn't paid, the conference won't be held. So by logical extension, if the, does that mean then if no conference is held, in effect, the application's denied and until they get that done, nothing happens?
Correct. The way the ordinance is currently written, the conference needs to occur before the application's submitted, so if that conference doesn't happen, we're not even considering the application as being submitted at that point.
Okay. Now I want to get to that section about the distance. There are eight, I don't know what you call it, situations, I guess. The first six say that the distance is 500 feet. The last two say that it's only 125 feet. And I read those and each one has a different sort of scenario about how that, and I talked to Mr. Werner, and apparently the last two have to do with something to do with public right of way on arterial streets or something. Parkview Elementary School is on an arterial street. It backs up to River Road. Does that mean by that language that there, the 125-foot rule applies instead of the 500?
The way that these eight are listed, they are preferences, so the higher ones are obviously more desired if they're gonna be submitted, and those lower ones that are hitting the 125 feet, they're less desirable. I believe it's possible, you know, Kevin looked at the actual layout and there are a couple of locations where it could happen, but based on that, it would be if it was installed in the center of the traffic signal or something of that nature, so it's hypothetically possible.
Because the other school I was thinking about is Colony Oak, because Murphy Road's gonna end up being an arterial too. And Colony Road by extension could be, so I mean, we've got a couple of schools that seven and eight might become an issue.
Yeah, and if we wanted to, if the council wanted to, with both seven and eight, we could strike out public or private school and just have it 125 feet from residential areas. What we were trying to do, obviously with the FCC order, a company would have an ability to put these towers in any residential neighborhood. We were trying to steer them as a preference to keep on the larger arterial streets and as far away as we can, but that, we thought that was a preference over the areas. But we could certainly strike out, because you're right, there are some of those that we probably didn't think all the way through.
Remove the school language from here.
We could remove that school language.
I, given what's going on here
Right.
and the meeting we had last month, I feel more comfortable with as much restriction as we can get into this thing.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we were trying to be realistic with this, with 125 feet, just trying to look at, that pretty much gets them at intersections. It's really even hard to do if you're not at an intersection. But I think taking out that language of the school still makes arterial's very feasible for a company to come in and do that.
Okay. And then the last question, I have a Section D of that section. As I read that, there can be no appeal of a permit based on concern about RF effects if the applicant can show that they've met all the requirements that the FCC has put out. We're done at that point.
That's correct. According to the FCC regulations, they're not finding any risks from this approved level of RF. So if that is the only complaint, then that is not a justifiable appeal and we're hamstrung there.
Okay. That's the only questions I have. Anybody else?
Actually, I would just like to probably say the same thing that Mike said. I think we're all, I think we're all concerned, and we've made this stipulation at last meeting, that, you know, we're not in agreeance with any of this. Hands are tied. But it's sad.
Well, and I think it's important to make the point which we made last time. Because we're doing this doesn't mean we're satisfied. We're doing this because it's the best we can do now.
Yeah, exactly.
If some of these lawsuits and stuff prevail and things change, we'll be right back here changing it to get the best we can get out of it. But we're just trying to preserve whatever rights we have now.
I, because I felt like, you know, last month that, you know, we're almost like being thrown under the bus, which we are in a sense, not by our own community, I thought that our own community understood. But the bottom line is, is our federal government and our, they have, they've crippled us as a city. And the reason why this city is successful is because Sorry.
I would also like to mention that after the last meeting, staff upon council's direction did prepare a letter to our representative, Harder, and voiced those concerns that the city's having. So we've reached out and doing what we can, but
And he got back to you right away and said, all right.
Sure.
Yeah, didn't you get that?
Oh, yeah. Go down there immediately.
I was gonna say, he's something like personal.
All right, so then what we would be looking for is a motion to adopt the ordinance with that one change to the section about distance from school.
And the removal of the last sentence of definition D.
Okay.
And changing that 250 to 500.
And striking the private votes.
Yeah. So whoever wants to step forward.
I'm gonna vote yes in protest, but I'm not making a motion to this side.
I'll make the motion. So I moved that we adopt ordinance 2A with the changes that have been
Noted changes.
Yeah, with the noted changes, thank you.
And that would include the, I don't know, the ordinance making it an urgency adoption?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Looks like you did.
Everybody voted?
Yep.
Okay. All right, moving on. Item 2B, first reading an introduction of an ordinance that amends Chapter 9.23 of the park rules. Who's handling this one?
I will, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff has been working for a while on making some updates and modifications to 9.23, the Ripon Municipal Code. The new version is there, it combined some areas and then deleted some and added a few. I can answer any questions. We did put a section in there to allow the Recreation Commission by resolution to address future park rules, like the jump houses or something that may come up in the future that we haven't anticipated. And without every time a request comes in, having to make changes through the ordinance process, the formal ordinance process, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone? I have a couple of comments about the ordinance itself. Section 9.23.040F, it talks about golf, but it doesn't say what golf is, but up in the definitions, it doesn't define golf, it defines golfing activities. I'm thinking you need to put the word golfing activities in there so at least you got a fighting chance. Because when I read the word golf, what I think golf is and what another golfer might think golf is probably don't come close.
We can put reference to the definitions.
Not, but it says golf, it doesn't say what that means.
Section, in the definition section, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it calls if you're using a golf club or a golf, a regulation golf ball, it constitutes golfing activities. We can reference the definition section in Section 9.23040 to try to clear that up.
Okay. And then in the next section, it has an abbreviation, and it took me a second, but I finally figured it out.
We'll fix that, we'll fix that in the community center. Yes, sir.
Then I have two other comments. One has to do with the Recreation Commission. I mean, it sounds like in this ordinance, they can take actions and impose rules and stuff. I've never, in the six years I've been on the council, seen any minutes or anything from the Recreation Commission about what they do, what they don't do. And my own sense is if we're giving them the power, which is fine, I just think we ought to see what they're doing so that we're not caught by surprise by three people in a meeting some night who say, what the heck is going on here and we don't know anything about it?
We will definitely, uh, get that information to you as it comes before the commission.
And then the last one is mainly for the organization of the presentation. So ordinance or whatever it is, references to attachments. But when you scroll through, there's no way to tell where an attachment starts and what ends and another one starts. It would be helpful to me, I got four meetings as we come and reading this stuff for hours. If it said attachment A, okay, that's what that is. Yeah, mainly for, we read this stuff all the time, they don't.
In this ordinance, the one thing I would point out, um, in the track changes version of the ordinance, uh, there was mistakenly some changes shown with recreational vehicles. That was not the intent. I think in the final versions, uh, that was not shown. Uh, that is something that is planned to be discussed at a, at a future workshop with the city council about the parking of the RVs.
So we're going with the existing language in there now?
Yeah, there's no proposed changes with that. So that's, that's really all I had. I, I could try to answer any questions, uh, that the council has. Otherwise, this is on for first reading and introduction.
I have to say that with the changes, it's a whole lot clearer than it was before.
I agree.
I would read through the red line, without the red lines and I, it was, it was a chore. At least now you can go through there and have a pretty good idea of what you can and can't do.
Yes.
Yes, it was very unclear before.
Yeah. Any questions? Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So this is first reading and introduction and then it'll come back next month and then thirty days after that?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. Chief Armandi.
Nothing to report, sir.
Whoa.
Just our monthly water report for February. Uh, we were at thirty-six percent, thirty-six point six percent reduction from two thousand thirteen. And I guess a big part of that is all the rain we've gotten. Uh, we continue, continue to wa, monitor the groundwater. Next month I will bring something to you showing you the, the actual, um, uh, the actual elevations of groundwater.
Can I make a comment to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
The comment I want to make is if anybody's got the eye on water, do the notification because I just happened to look at it the other day and I have a leak. So now I set it up to where it lets me know I've got the leak. I would not have known had I not checked. So it's, that's a great system, but you gotta use it right. That's all I want to say.
Um, I would just make a comment about the, all the water flowing down the river, it's flooding the parks and appreciate, uh, the work that's been done fencing off the sections that get a little bit dangerous out there, I think. So nice work there. And, um, anybody who cares about the water situation, uh, you can think, thank our, uh, state government and federal government for sending all out to the ocean when we could be, uh, solving some problems with it. So that's my two cents. Glad we have an audience to hear it.
Mr. Stevens, do you have anything?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. If you have been out to the sports park recently, they are moving some dirt and, uh, working on the indoor, uh, sports facility out there. Uh, staff is moving forward, uh, with sending out a, uh, a request for proposals to generate interest in leasing that facility and making improvements to the facility. Plan on doing that in the next week or two and, uh, generating, uh, some extra revenue out there in, in the future. And so just wanted to, uh, report on that. And, and as, as the project goes along, if anyone, you know, has any questions or wants a tour or wants to look at the plans, uh, we'll make arrangements, uh, to provide all those opportunities for you. And then next, uh, last May in two thousand eighteen, uh, there was a modification to the ordinance for our skate park to allow scooters in it. Every couple of months I'd meet with the chief to see if there are any significant, um, problems or issues out there. And it seems to be going fairly well, so we will bring something back. Probably just to keep it at, uh, recommend keeping things as is. Uh, but certainly in the next, either next meeting or the following meeting, we said within a year's timeframe, we would bring that back, uh, for the council to finalize. That's all I have.
So they've actually, are they, I noticed the pad, but they're actually starting to work, gonna start working on the building too?
Yeah, they've started some of the underground.
Oh, cool. Mr. Peace?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, I provided the council with the updated project list. Um, I did want to note that the federal government is rescinding seven point six billion dollars in certain unobligated projects, um, nationwide. Some of those projects, uh, include CMEC funded projects and RSTP funded projects. Uh, we have one of each. And, um, so the, two of those projects on here, um, that we have are, are Stockton Avenue Project and our Colony Hoff Traffic Signal Project. Um, we have until September first to get those projects obligated. Uh, we're working diligently with Caltrans to make sure that that happens and that we don't lose those funds. Um, I just wanted to bring that to, to the council's awareness, so. Other than that, everything seems to be, uh, on track, so.
And they've started work on River Road too, right?
Yeah, they've started, uh, they cleared the orchard and, um, started gutting the road and, uh, moving along, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
Hey, James, it looks like you've got four projects that are gonna finish up this month. You still on track for all those to finish up?
Uh, yeah, those are the, the license plate readers, the recycling center. Um, uh, Dan may be able to shed a little bit more light on the cameras, but we're, we're nearing the end of those installs, so, yeah, yeah.
When I noticed the generator was gone from the recycling center today, so they must've gotten that done yesterday?
PGK, PGE came out and installed the transformer and conductors. We're waiting on the meter, their meter department to install the meter, but that's supposed, supposed to have been done today. And as far as I know, it hasn't, but we're, we're not gonna hold our breath.
The mountain's getting bigger, so they, we gotta get something going out there.
I was out there today, they weren't there.
Yeah.
So, um, we're.
They can't use it.
I know. We're putting pressure on PGE as much as we can. Um, they, they were supposed to have been put in yesterday and then they said today, so we're, we're patiently waiting.
Can I, James, a question real quick? So, James, on the community center parking lot field modification, the current state status is environmental preliminary. When you say complete construction installation, does that mean the design and all that will be done? Or you're actually gonna have all the pavers in and everything else done?
That, that's our goal, yeah, based on the, the begin construction installation and the complete is to have, have a finished product.
Really? Wow, that's good.
Cause we don't have to deal with the state or the feds.
Yeah, and I, I will, I guess to kind of follow up on that, you know, as priorities like this, um, come up or, uh, situations like this come up, you know, we may be shifting, uh, where our priorities and efforts go uh, for, for projects that need to be pushed through sooner, so.
Well, I just think that's good with, with everybody being so busy now, hard getting contractors and everything else and engineers and designers and things like that, that's, that's good.
Any questions for James? Mr. DuCathy?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Werner?
Nothing to report?
Mr. Uker?
This, well, March eighteenth, which is the day after St. Patrick's Day that the veterans of foreign war are having a corned beef and cabbies feed. And if you need tickets, you can come to Farmers Insurance and Main Street and buy tickets. Since I am.
Or you can go just go in and visit too. He loves to have people drop in.
Fifteen dollars, all you can eat, start from twelve to seven. Guys like, um, Leo could eat all day. And he bought a ticket already, so it's okay.
Also ask about current terms too.
Mr. DeGraff?
Uh, nothing other than, uh, as always, a thank you to the members of the public who are here to listen and, uh, speak your mind, so appreciate your input, appreciate you being here, as always, thanks.
Mr. Restuccia?
Yeah, just one thing since, uh, Dean is advertising, I'm gonna advertise as well. April sixth is our first responder appreciation day. Um, we'll meet here at the fire department at eight-thirty. We'll start a walk at nine o'clock and we have a guest speaker this year, which I think will be very interesting. Um, we had three hundred and fifty or so people the first year, about four hundred the second year, according to people that counted. So I expect that or more this year, so I think it'll be a good turnout. And it's, it's to come out and thank all of our first responders for what they do. And you're all invited.
Reception in your backyard afterwards?
Reception's in our backyard afterwards.
Told you why.
No, she'll find out.
He wants it to be a surprise.
Vice Mayor Parks?
Nothing to report?
I have nothing either. Meeting's adjourned. Close.